My name is John Lincoln Jr., I'm Alderman of the First Ward. Maybe we could all introduce ourselves.
Assistant Fire Chief Anthony Garia.
Chief Mark Jensen, Fire Department.
Steve Lund, the Building and Zoning Inspector.
Wayne Blue, Business Administrator for the Fulton City School District.
I'm Ruth Duretta, I'm Council to the School District with the firm of Grossman, Kenny Dwyer, Reitz and Harrigan.
John Tripp, Board President.
I'd like to welcome the pastor, Bruno. Thank you for coming. How we were gonna set this up tonight is, we would like some public comments or questions to be filled in to all of us up here before you, and hopefully we'll be able to answer a lot of questions regarding the tentative sale and/or the use of the Phillips Street School Building. This is just an informational meeting, and I can thank everybody for coming. Would anybody like to make any opening statements? Go ahead. Would you come up to the mic, please, and state your name?
Good evening, my name is David Tietrol, First Ward Resonating. Most of you know me that are here. I'd like to first say that I spoke with Reverend Bruno a few nights back. We talked for about a half hour, and I asked him the same questions that pretty much everyone here is concerned with, is it gonna be a halfway house? How many people are gonna be there? Are they gonna be supervised? And I did take notes during our conversation, which I explained to Reverend Bruno that I was doing, in order to present them here this evening, and I'd just like to go over the same questions you're here to ask tonight, I took notes for. They are set for the closing on November 15th. They are gonna have an open house for all First Ward residents. They plan on having the teen center open two days a week. Open from 2:30 to 8:30. Their congregation will meet Wednesday nights, as I understand it, from 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM, Sundays from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon.
You said the teen center is two days per week?
Right, two days per week.
What specific days are we talking about?
Well, I am here, let me say that I'm glad to be here, and I'm happy to see all of you, my new neighbors, and I'm glad to be in Fulton, the city with a future. There have been a lot of rumors and speculations, and our church has suffered a lot of abuse and misuse and misunderstanding. I am here to say, first of all, getting acquainted with you, that I am originally from the Third World, from Haiti. I am here in search of a future, and I have found it in Jesus Christ, the future I've been looking for, and I'm glad to be in Fulton. Now, let me say that my background is that I grew up as a Catholic, you know, I attended Catholic school in my home country. Twelve years ago, I became a born-again Christian, and I believe like evangelist Billy Graham believes, in Jesus Christ. I wasn't going to make it tonight because I wasn't going to be available tonight. I had already told Mr. John Lincoln that I was busy, because he had already arranged that meeting without contacting me, having contacted me. But I made some final last-minute arrangements to be here, and I'm glad to be here. I wanna say, first of all, that I pastor a white congregation. I am obviously black, the congregation is all white. All the teenagers, young people who attend our church are all white. My wife is white, she's a registered nurse, and she has worked at Lee Memorial Fulton Hospital in the past. We have several registered nurses in our congregation. We have engineer contractors. Since we've been in the city of Fulton, we have tried to do nothing but good in the city of Fulton to improve it. It's been almost two years. We've had free skating at the BiLoo, we pay, teenagers come, we help them, we educate them about drugs, alcohol. We have even prevented a few of them from killing themselves. They've come to us, and we contacted their parents, and we love them, and we've helped in many ways, and we've taught them and helped them to love people and love the elderly and do, and improve the community. That's all we've done. Now, since we've heard all these rumors about open house, halfway house, and everything, I want to say that it's just rumor. It's been fabricated and manufactured, I don't know by whom, you know, but we have never claimed that, we have never talked about it in our church, it's just rumors, based on nothing. It's unfounded. There is no such thing as a halfway house. And let me also say that, as far as the youth center is concerned, I was reading an article in the Valley News that Mr. John Lincoln submitted on Thursday. It says that the First Ward residents say they would welcome Hosanna as a worship center, but are not eager to see a teen center in operation there. Many senior citizens reside in the neighborhood, and the influx of teenagers may cause a disturbance, it is feared. So the First Ward residents say they would welcome Hosanna as a worship center. Well, I have been thinking, pondering, praying about this. I have come to the conclusion, and the members of our congregation, that Jesus Christ never forces anything on anybody. Therefore, if the First Ward residents would welcome the church, and not the youth center, therefore, the idea is buried, it's canceled, and it's dropped. So, any other questions?
I'm Joey Moore, and I live next door to him. We actually do not have any criticism about having the youth center there. I want you to be aware of that, any more than we do the church.
It's dropped, the youth center is over, so...
Okay, then there's...
Yeah, it's over. We've canceled it, it's dropped, we're not going to have it, and we're not going to force it on anybody. It's dropped.
What brought that decision on Reverend Bruno?
Because, because the thing is that we've tried to do good, we've tried to reach out to teens, and when we first came up with the idea, it was just because we had seen teenagers playing basketball outside of the cities, of the building school, and we had seen some playing football on the grass. So we thought, well, let's do something nice. What about getting the school building, and instead of them playing, being, you know, unsupervised, because we care, we thought, let's bring them inside and help them. But we're not going to force anything on anybody, so we're just gonna, we're not gonna have it, and that's what they stole it.
But I don't understand why you would just drop it, based on some of the residents hearing some rumors and naturally being concerned. I mean, the last thing I wanna see is someone drop the plans to give the teens in the city of Fulton a place to go.
Well, right now, it's not, it seems to me that it's creating too much havoc and too much problems, and we don't need that.
But nothing worth having comes easy anyway, so I say you still fight for it, and you may not even have to. With them being here tonight, for you to answer their questions, maybe set them at ease a little bit more, and one of the things I'd like to point out, in my conversation with Reverend Bruno, is, he not only wanted to conduct a teen center, but he wanted to keep the teens involved with the community. If there's a senior citizen that may need her, his or her lawn raked, or a trip to the grocery store, just to be kept company, the teens in the city have no place to go and nothing to do. I came before this council six weeks ago, representing three teens who sent Mayor Valet a letter, wanting a place to go. I contacted Mike Egan at the Board of Education, and talked to him about it, and petitioned this common council to allow a place for the teenagers to go, and that very night, I met Reverend Bruno and commended him on opening that teen center.
Well, the mayor had called me, the mayor had called me, and congratulating me and the church for making a difference. We have made an impact upon many teens, all white. We have helped a lot, but we are not going to force anything on anybody, and it's over, and it's dead. And there is no halfway house, I've never talked about it, it's all rumors, I don't know anything about it, and our congregation has never said anything about halfway houses. If you read it in the newspapers, somebody else is fabricating it, manufacturing it, it's not from us, so I don't know. But I love you all in the city of Fulton, and since I've been in this city, the residents have been nice, warm, friendly, and I've never had any problem with anybody, and everybody is very nice, and, you know, I just want you to know.
David, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Where do you live?
On West First Street.
Okay, are you a member of the...
No.
...worship center?
No, I'm a member, Holy Family.
I'm glad you emphasized that.
I have no political interest in the church of Hosanna, nor an interest in joining the congregation, which Reverend Bruno is aware of. As I said before, I came and petitioned this council six weeks ago, met Reverend Bruno for the first time, to have something made available to the teens. I'm deeply saddened tonight that these plans are dropped for the youth center. I think it's a step in the wrong direction, and I don't know how these rumors get started. I really don't.
I think there was a lot of politics involved into it, and there was nothing we could do, as a church.
Well, excuse me Pastor, but if you truly believe in this, and I think I expressed this to you, that we were not concerned, we were welcoming the church. As far as the youth center, we were asking you questions about how many children, how many teens, or how many children were going to be in this youth group that you want to organize?
Not only questions, but there was a lot of rumors.
Excuse me, excuse me. All we wanted to know was a number, what the hours were gonna be, and now you're throwing in a towel. I mean, if you firmly believed in this, why are you all of a sudden, sudden now, turning around and saying, "I don't wanna do this anymore"?
Because there is a lot of stress, you see, the thing is that we thought we were doing a good thing. We didn't want all this stress and all the things our congregation is going through for doing a good thing.
But Pastor, what I'm saying is, if you really believed in this, all our neighborhood has asked our questions, and we need answers. It's not that we were against this, we were asking for answers to the questions we had.
Well, we have proved that we believe in teens, because for the past six months, we've been meeting, we've been convening, converging, meeting at the BiLoo skating rink, and we have opened it for free, we have rented it for $900 a month to accommodate teenagers for free skating and free snacks. Our congregation has proved it.
No Reverend, I understand her question, and I'm equally as eager to hear a response to that, because if you, when you started this, you were so eager to get a teen center in there, and now you're throwing in the towel.
Because, because as I said, the avalanche, the preponderance of rumors and the stress...
But that's what we're here for tonight, to get past the rumors, get these people informed, and hopefully go on with the teen center.
This is the reason why this meeting was called tonight, to get the, and I have explained to you, and the two owners that I have talked to, that we need an informational meeting to know what's going on with this, with the church, and what the church's plans are for, for their building.
I have forgot to say, that our congregation is about 20 families, and we should have enough, there should be enough parking spots for the church, because I believe there is a Catholic church right there too. And as far as the zoning is concerned, I should foresee no problem for a church to meet there, because there is a Catholic church right there, and as far as the halfway house, we never thought of it, because it's foolish, because the zoning would not allow us to, so... But as far as your question, to answer you, it's just that, it's just that we have really put our hearts in the past almost two years to help young people, and when we have faced all these things, and they were unfounded, and merciless things were being said, and we just, we don't, we just don't need it for doing something good, we just don't need it.
You are saying you've heard these unfounded rumors, well, how do you think we feel? I mean, we live next door, they are the same rumors that we've heard, and this is why this meeting was called, to get answers. What's going on? We wanna know what's going on. We are not against the church, as I said, and not against the youth group. I mean, we all had children, and at one time or another, they were all teens.
I have three, so...
So we do need to know what's going on with the youth center, how many youths are expected, who controls what happens after they leave the youth center? Are they gonna be congregating on our properties? Are they going to be there till 10, 11 o'clock at night? This is the sort of question we want here.
Yeah, and there isn't going to be a new...
I have just one more point that I would like to make. Go ahead, go ahead.
And for this youth center that you were going to have, is it true that they were going to be bussed in from Syracuse? Is it for our use?
Yeah, you see, this is one thing that has, that has really lacerated, wounded us a lot, because, because the thing is this, for the, for the almost two years, we've been doing good and reaching out, we've been helping nobody but white teenagers. We never made any plan to go downtown Syracuse and boss a bunch of whatever blacks people are afraid of. The thing is that if I was going to bring blacks, I would go to Haiti, because that's where I'm from, you know, you know, it's just...
Excuse me, that you speak of, are they Syracuse families or our Fulton families?
Our congregation is from Fulton, from Fulton, and they are citizens. Let me say this, I want to also congratulate, to eulogize and praise the Board of Education for having voted to sell the school building to us, because the building was sitting there for two years, at taxpayers' expense, collecting dust, nothing but dust, for two years, and we were the only people to bid on it. And in a year and a half, we have managed to raise $22,500. As a matter of fact, we have given the Fulton School City District $10,500 for the past six months, they've been holding it. But I want to congratulate them and praise them for doing what is in the best interest of the taxpayers, instead of the buildings just sitting there, to work with us and do something with it.
I'd like to comment on that, just that of the school board. I don't believe in it, I think the school board just sold the public short, because I don't think it was publicized, and I think if they stretched out and got a few contractors and stuff, to look at that building a little different, I think that it, that it'd sound different. Right now, I look at it differently. Maybe what you're talking about is the church, I don't really know. Fulton's getting cut short on a lot of things, and the biggest thing that Fulton's getting cut short on is taxes. They're getting thrown at more taxes, so here we're gonna have another building off the tax roll. I don't look at, I look at it that way. We're always constant, every year, getting taxes, and one of the biggest things is the school system, keeps raising earnings, I swear with county, and everything else. We got a Fulton Board that says there sells Fulton right down the, you know, tubes. I don't look at it that way. I think the school board just sold the building, they should have looked at it a little different. And I don't understand why you need such a big building in the first place, with that, with the congregation you're talking about.
Let me answer that, because, because such a, such a building would allow us in the future, let me answer that sir, such a building would allow us in the future to have a Christian school.
Okay, now, now you're getting what you're talking about, now you're talking about a Christian school or something like that?
In the future, in the, in the future, in the future, should we desire as a congregation, it would suit us perfect for a Christian school.
No, it's, when you have the churches that go and have their own supper classes, right? You're talking about each one has their supper classes that goes up, just like a school, right? During the church service, right?
Well, if we should plan to have a Christian school, um...
I still don't understand, but they build it. I really don't, because right now, if they, that building is way beyond, I mean, the maintenance on there is gonna be terrific on it and stuff. I can't get quite through my head that you need such a great big huge building like that. I think there's other ways that could be done, and I heard the comment, that this school system is a, you know, is a business, you know? Now we all, once we're, the school system is a financing place too, because we're paying so much per month to the school board, so now the school system turns out to be a financing place too now.
I think I should respond to that, and I wanna respond to a number of your comments, sir, I understand what your question is, and that has been raised by a number of people, so let me address that so that everyone is clear. First, prior to having received the Church of God's proposal to purchase this building in late May, the school district tried pursuant to public auction to sell this building, and did not receive one bid. It was the Church of God who then came forward with a purchase offer, as it was, to purchase this building for what is considered to be a fair market value. This is not a $1 transaction. With respect to your comments about it being a tax-exempt property, that is the case, it was a tax-exempt property prior, during its tenure as the Phillips Street School, and under, should this sale go forward with Reverend Bruno and the Church of God, it will continue to be tax-exempt. We wanted a commercial undertaking to find a use for this building, and none came forward after many, many months, and probably more than a year, of attempts by the district to sell it to a commercial business, that was unsuccessful. There simply was no interest in it. With respect to the method of sale, both the state education law and the state school district law provide that you can't gift or loan for nothing, you know, your money to a not-for-profit group or to a profit-making group, but certainly you can extend a loan. This is a loan at 6.5%. It is permissible under the state constitution. This is a two-year mortgage, a 24-month mortgage. If the sale goes through, that mortgage will be secured by a note, it will be secured by a $22,500 deposit down payment, and we will make sure that the Church of God has the financial wherewithal to honor the terms of that secured obligation. So the district has an obligation to, one, dispose of excess property, two, to act in the best interest of the taxpayer, and three, to act in the best interest of the neighborhood, and it has fulfilled all three of those functions in the event that this sale should go forward.
How did the church represent themselves in their presentation? Jerusaleh 213 Phillips. Did they indicate to the school board that they had specific intentions for that piece of property?
Yes.
Yes, sir, they did.
I will, I will respond to that, and I would like to say one other thing to that gentleman if I could. We advertised in the papers, we, the Board of Education, for two years, that we've negotiated with other potential buyers to sell the property. You know, as we, when we opened Granby, there were some small elementary schools, which obviously the school district did not need, need to educate the students, so therefore, it's in the best interest of the city, the school district of Fulton, and the community not to keep property and to let it sit there and not be occupied. The board has an obligation to do that.
To me, if anything, I, you know, I look at it, like I said, I'm looking at it as, we're giving money coming in, the people need help, the school needs help in tax dollars. I would turn it, I would turn the school down, and I'd put up seven new homes, I, that's, I mean, that'd be nice, for seven new homes.
We were hoping we would have a lot of bidders to do that. We really were hoping to have those types of bidders, but no one showed any interest, and because of that, we had no other options.
I have a couple more points. Reverend Bruno, I'd like to address you. I've stated already, I'm a little unhappy. You stated before, in your opening comments, that you have helped, even helped teens from committing suicide. So are you saying that if we came here tonight, or there were rumors in the paper, that we didn't like the way you helped teens to stray away from committing suicide, that because a few people had a rumor that it wasn't a good thing to do, that you would not help them?
No, that's not, that's not what I'm saying. Obviously, Dave, you've seen, you've heard already, all the, the...
I've seen a few statements in the newspapers...
But you've heard the...
That were questioning.
The gentleman here, you've heard him, how he came against it, I mean, you just heard him.
Right, and his questions were answered, and I thought very well and thoroughly, and it has nothing to do really with this teen center that all of a sudden you're giving up on, and I really think...
I don't want to, I don't want to give up on teens, that's not what I said. I just think, again, I just think, right now, we don't need, you know, all this, this wrestling and this...
But I don't think it is that much. No one has come here tonight in lynch mob form to see to it that you did not open a teen center.
You don't speak for all of you.
I won't speak for all of you, but I just don't understand why you would just throw in the towel this early.
I'm a, obviously, you see that the teen center is not welcomed by, you know, by some people, so...
Okay, thank you.
I would like to answer the gentleman's question. He did ask a question if the Board of Education knew what the intent of the Hosanna Worship Center was. Yes, they included a letter with their bid, okay, and in that letter to the Board of Education, it stated six uses for the building. One, an affordable daycare center. Two, youth center activities. Three, playground for children. Four, a Christian school. Five, church services. And the sixth item was a food distribution pantry. Now, these items are the understanding for the Board of Education. If any other uses are included, and again, I do not wanna speak for our attorney who's working on the details, it must be approved by the Board of Education.
Just a question on the sale of the property.
Six and a half percent, $22,000 now. Doesn't that show about $6,500 of interest, which could be considered as being on the tax roll? That's additional money to him. And how long will we hold the mortgage for right now, as of planning? From what I heard, two years, and then possibly find another lending institution, but will we carry it out until the full extent?
No, the amortization schedule, which we have prepared in the event that the sale goes forward, provides for a $750 monthly payment reflecting the 6.5% interest, and you'll recall that the scoreboard, school board voted that it would be the purchase price plus interest, and that is only for a 24-month period, there is no contingency for extension. The Church of God has told us that they will make a balloon payment at the end of the 24th month, and at that time, they will refinance with a private lending institution.
Or you could, or they could get the building back.
Yes, but the question is here, is why would, if the school, and you say you can't finance, well, the school can finance. The state says you can't finance. Why give it up? Do you realize by financing it through our own hands, we're taking in money that could be tax dollars? We're gonna give it to Fulton Savings Bank or Smother Bank, $6,500 a year, we could carry the mortgage for 20 years, still have it within our grasp, and the money that you lost in tax rolls, you will gain back in interest, which will go into the conference.
For two years?
No, I'm saying, why not carry it for the extension? I'm asking the board to consider carrying it for the extension of the mortgage, why just two years?
They live completely off the tax roll, for the city and for the school. There's no revenue coming back into the city or back into the school ever again, because they own it and are tax exempt.
We're gonna own it anyways. I'm saying, if the purchase goes through, then carry it for the extension of the entire thing, so you don't lose it. That interest is just as good as tax roll.
And it was empty for two years.
You know the whole savings, they carry the mortgage, they're gonna get the interest.
I'd like to ask one question. I'm new from the First Ward. I'd like to know, to the fire chief, how does that rate with our fire code in the city? How's that building rate with that? Does it, does it meet our standards?
Well, that's one reason why the school, I think, got away from it, and they built, they closed some of these older schools in the city, because of the fire codes and the building codes. It's something that we're gonna have to go inside and take a look at and address, and then we will confront the Reverend, and he will have to bring it up to code.
Who's gonna finance that? Reverend, do you have enough money to, to meet our code, to bring up the standard?
Well, when you say enough money, I don't know how much money we're talking about, you know? You know, that's why, so I don't know, you know? You know? You know? So, so, I don't know, I just have to inquire into how much we're talking about, you know? Like they say, that, like they say, we're just trying to purchase the building, so if we find out it's some gargantuan, gigantic amount of money, so, you know, we probably can't do it, you know, that, you know, that's what, you know, that's the bottom line, you know?
Will this be done before the sale takes place? Will the evaluation be done before?
Mr. Luddington was not able to be here tonight, and so I spoke with him today, and he told me that that is a requirement. I'm speaking for the city attorney now, in that he said that I may inform you of this. He will require that, I suppose you have a certificate of occupancy provision, which requires... requires that that building be brought up to code before it is used. So it is the duty of the prospective purchaser, Reverend Bruno, to determine exactly what that amount is. He cannot look to the city or the school district to tell him what that amount is. The burden is on the purchaser.
Well, you know, we would be more than happy to investigate and find out exactly because we want our congregation to be safe. We have children, we have teenagers, we have, you know, we definitely want to be in a safe building and not a precarious, unsafe one. So I would like, you know, to address it as soon as possible and find out, you know, what we're talking about.
November 15th is only two weeks away. If they say it's not up to code, but the sale's going to go through on the 15th, or is that pending that it goes to code before the sale? So it won't be November 15th?
That is a very tentative date. Back in August, when we began this process in earnest after the school board had approved the sale, we looked to November 15th because that is the day on which I believe there is a lease that expires in favor of the Church of God. And so that, I think at the rink, those leases expire.
Yeah, which we will be in the streets, probably.
However, it, the sale will not go through until the school board is persuaded that, as I stated before, the Church of God has the financial wherewithal to meet its security obligation under this note and mortgage. And part of that is bringing the building up to the code so that the city is satisfied that that building can achieve a certificate of occupancy. So at this point, I am considering that a very tentative date. And as time goes on, it doesn't appear that we will be able to meet the November 15th closing date.
I must say also, with, our church has gotten the insurance, you know, to cover the Phillips Street School building already because we've been there scrubbing, you know, walls and with mildew on them and doing these things. So we already have our own insurance coverage on that in case something happens. But our insurance company is going to also send somebody, an inspector, to completely scrutinize and peruse and examine carefully the building before, you know, we even go forward with it too.
I'm new from the First Ward, and if everyone has this handout, I'm wondering if the Reverend Bruno has gotten any commitment from the State Department of Youth for some support in the teen center? Have you approached them or they you?
Yeah, what happened is that when the mayor found out what we were doing, and he wanted to get in touch with me, so I called the mayor. And then the mayor himself did, he said to me, he said, "You're doing something like that and you plan to use the Phillips Street School building?" He said, "This is going to be a lot of money. Have you ever thought presenting it to the city council members?" I never thought of it, but when he brought it up, I said, "Wow, you know, that's an excellent idea." So that's what I proceeded to do. And when I came here, we met with several people, and Mr. Lincoln was one of them. And there was promise to help us with the youth center, financial help. But now, it's all history.
You're saying you did get a promise?
No, no, I did get a promise, but not a single dollar.
No, he didn't get a promise, okay? The Assoco City County Youth Bureau Director was here, Kathy Fenlin. And there are monies that are available, there are matching grants through the Assoco City County Youth Bureau. Now, there was extra money that were supposed to be given to the city of Fulton, city of Oswego, and the different towns for youth, okay? But being that the city of Fulton does not have youth-oriented type of programs, that money goes directly to the Assoco City County Youth Bureau. What they would like to do is, they'd like to give that money back to the city of Fulton so they could have some youth programs.
But you have to, of course, the fact that this would be a church-oriented teen center, and your money, your grant money wouldn't be available to church-oriented. I'm in the Catholic Church, so I'm aware of that kind of a situation.
So the grant one...
In fact, David Tietro was supposed to be at that meeting also, who originally wanted to come before the common council to possibly use the War Memorial and start having youth activities at the War Memorial.
But I would question why, at the meeting that I came and wanted to do something for the teens, it was the first, very first night I met Reverend Bruno, but there was no mention of any monies available made to me...
Right.
To get that off the ground.
Well, because you didn't attend that meeting that I met the Reverend Bruno at.
Apparently Reverend Bruno was talking that the mayor had mentioned monies might be available to him before that meeting.
That was long before I ever met the reverend. That was in probably...
Right, but that's my point. When I came before the council, there was no mention of any monies available. I was specifically asking for the War Memorial to be made available to teens a couple nights a month.
Right, but you see, when we met with Reverend Bruno, the youth activities meeting that we had that you weren't at, okay, Kathy Fenlin from the Assoco City County Youth Bureau was there, and she mentioned these matching grants. And that's how we found out about them.
And I also asked Reverend Bruno a few days ago, when I spoke with him, if he was going to be receiving any grant money. He told me, no. And my purpose for asking him that particular question was because of what I wanted to do for the teens, and there was no mention of any monies made available to me. And before this meeting that I didn't make, which I called your house and left a message that I could not make and I was ill that night, this commitment to money, maybe being there, was made long before I came here that night and addressed the council for the War Memorial. That's the only point I wanted to make. There was mention of money made to Reverend Bruno, but not to myself. That was the point I wanted to make.
Yeah, but like I say, we had met with Reverend Bruno after that, and it was pointed out to us by Kathy Fenlin.
And I understand you, John, if I had not been able to attend that meeting, I would have known about that before.
Because you keep bringing up the concern that I think you have, as far as, you keep saying or projecting that we are against colored or that that's what we're afraid of in the neighborhood. Why do you do that?
Uh-oh, let me, let me say, let me say that, let, I don't, let me say something. It's the fact that the rumor was I was going to bus people from downtown Syracuse to bring here. And that's not fair because I never intended to do that, so.
So you just assumed?
Well, that sounds like it, doesn't it? I mean, I was going to bus people from downtown Syracuse. I mean, I mean, what does that sound like? I was going to...
Put yourself in our shoes, then true.
But I never said that. I never said I was going to bus people from downtown Syracuse.
But how did we know? It was the same rumor you heard.
So I wanted to clarify and crystallize and highlight that it's not true.
So I don't think you really ever answered what you were going to do with that big building.
Oh, well, they enumerated and outlined, you know, so eloquently, Mr. Bro just did. Didn't, I think Mr. Bro just did that, you know?
As far as the school, it would be like a...
He mentioned many things, six things. He enumerated.
Okay. How many of those are for profit?
For what?
For profit.
Profit? Well, we're not after profit because we've been giving free, free programs at the BILO, you know, for free, you know? I don't know what you mean by profit, you know? I mean, our paramount, preeminent, primary goal is to help the community and serve it. So our congregation, they are very generous and they're giving. They believe in the great commission, a goal, and help people. And so they give so that we can help.
Just a few questions on what you've been doing, okay? Not what you can do in the future, what you say you're not going to do in the future. What are the ages of the students you have been serving primarily through the BILO free programs?
From...
Primary age?
All ages. We have puppet shows for the children. They come and they sit on the floor. And we have puppet show and ice cream for five, six, seven, eight years old and all these things. And up, we've eleven, twelve, thirteen, up to nineteen years old, you know, from five to nineteen up, you know?
Going with the teens in mind, the fourteen to eighteen-year-old that the community says doesn't have a place to go, through your programs, have you ever had a situation where the Fulton Police Department or the Sheriff's Department has had to respond to your location?
Yes, yes, yes. We've had that, but because of one or two troublemakers, that doesn't mean that, you know, you should not do good. I mean, yeah, we've had that. We've had to call the police for one or two, you know, troublemakers.
How many teens do you have in your congregation?
How many what?
How many people, first?
How many people? I would say a little bit over twenty families, something like that.
Does everyone support this program?
Well, the thing is that, if you think about it, the thing is that, if you think about it, we have raised $22,500 in a year and a half, you know? You know, you know, you know? So, well, we average, you know, like I said, you know, in a year...
No profit?
Well, the BILO...
And you're going to, you're going to continue this program?
Not anymore.
After the school is signed over to you? What's going to stop you from going to Syracuse or Oswego or anyplace else to bring the people in to your congregation?
What's going to stop, because I had, I said that we weren't going to do that. We came to have a church in Fulton and to help the people in Fulton.
You can go outside of Fulton after you've got it down on paper?
What's going to stop us?
Yes.
We've said no tonight. Did we, you know, our words are what, you know, we are bound by what we say. We Christians, we, well, maybe for you doesn't mean anything, but I'm just saying what we say is what we mean. We're not going to do that.
Your contract's been broken.
Well, we don't do that.
I don't know.
Well, let me address that, the expense. What we understand is this, that we weren't going to heat the entire building. What we were planning to do is just use the first floor. It's a good question, the expense, okay? Because we've been thinking and pondering on this, I mean, deeply. What we want to do is close the stairs, two stairs with doors for fire access, okay? But we wanted to concentrate the heat on the first floor, which the plumber, certified plumber that's been working for us says it's possible to shut off all the radiators on the second, third floor and just concentrate the heat just on the first floor. By doing that, we have contacted NIMCO and we see, you know, we analyze what it's going to cost us, and we figure that we can make it.
Some of the items that you indicated, your daycare center, your youth center, possible school, do you have people within your congregation presently that are certified to instruct or have been licensed to do, to operate these kinds of centers? Or is this just...
Okay, let me answer that. When we say Christian school, daycare center, we're not talking about something that is imminent, we're going to do tomorrow. But when you look at that building, the potential is enormous, what our congregation can do there. And these goals are what our desires are, you know, we would like to do. But the teen center was a big part of what we wanted to do because the teens could use some help in the city. But as far as, you know, people qualified, you know, we have a lot of people qualified, you know, to do these things, you know?
Well, I don't think anybody here is going to take exception or argument to teens, to youth. Many of us have spent twenty, thirty years working with the youth in Fulton. But I think the youth center is two separate issues. If it's used by you for your congregation and for the children of your congregation, that's one thing. If it's used as a youth center for the youth of Fulton or elsewhere, that's a different issue. That's an issue that I take exception to, and I think many of my neighbors take exception to.
Okay, and that's what I said...
That school is not the place to put the teen center.
And exactly, you see, that's why I said it's dropped, it's canceled, it's dead, it's buried.
You're holding a gun to your head saying you've got to drop the issue, and I think that's what Dave Tietro...
But you just, you just, you just express your, I mean, that's, I mean, that's what you just said. And that's why, that's why I did not want to have a wrestling match. I said, it's dead, it's buried, it's gone. It's history.
Your prime purpose is to get into the building and do it as a church. And then you have other things that you'd like to do in the future.
Exactly right, sir.
And that's what the concerns are here, is because that building has enormous potential, and we're a little concerned about the potential of some of the uses of the building. And I think you understand our concerns, too.
I comprehend, you know, and that's why, you know, that's why I said, you know, we're not going to have a wrestling match. It's dropped.
I worked over here at Burnside, I'm a member of the Church of God. My wife here is a member, and we have a few members right here. My wife works at Oswego Hospital. I just want to tell everybody that I back up Pastor Reverend Bruno 100% for what he's done to the kids, for the kids in Fulton. And I got to say that the issue is more than just, just the school or building or money. The issue is changing people's lives and seeing the miracles of God be performed in people's lives. So I just get a sense that there's a lot of, a lot of fear and misunderstanding, and that can be understandable in the times we're looking at now, but I just want to say that I back this man up 100%.
Thank you, John.
I think your idea to drop the teen center is a very good one at this point, but don't give it up. Let your community, let your church come into the community if it goes through, maybe a year, two down the road, when people see your actions. They get a feel for the, how you, while you fit into the neighborhood, then at that point, it may be time to talk again. But to throw everything down everybody's throat at one time, I think it was just too much to swallow. And I think in small bits, you might find it to be more readily acceptable.
Well, I thank you. And I just want to say, for almost two years, we've been good neighbors in the city of Fulton. You haven't heard of us doing any harm in the city of Fulton, and we've done nothing bad, you know? We've done nothing bad.
Can you speculate on how, if you were to move into that building and use it in the way that you would like to use, what advantage are we going to have as property owners within that district? Do you think that our property values are going to increase? It's going to be easier to sell our houses or do anything with our properties? Can you see some advantage for us?
What I thought was that when teens are geared in the right direction and they feel that people care about them, they exert their efforts, their energies to really do positive things. And we were going to try to encolcate and instill in teens, you know, to help the elderly and go, you know, shovel snow when they need help and things like that, you know, we were planning to do. We were planning to have, you know, some movies that do not glorify, advocate violence and crafts and puppet shows and ping-pongs and pools and basketball tournaments. And when it would be all over, we would just bus them to their homes so that they would not make, you know, there would be no cacophony, no noise throughout the neighborhood. We were really planning this thing. We weren't going to just, you know...
You got to answer some of our questions, right here. I have a question I don't know who could answer it, but what happens to that building if, say, the sale goes through, their money's paid, their balloon payment's paid, they've paid the bank debt, they now solely own that building? And say, five years after they solely own it, or a year or six months, they've all of a sudden decided, we want to relocate. Who takes responsibility for the upkeep of that building now that the church owns it?
The church. Your building code and property code require that the current owner, regardless of whether they are present or absent, must maintain a building pursuant to the code. And I think that you're expressing the fear that they're gone, they're out of town, and now their building is falling into disrepair. Well... Well, that is a question for the city of Fulton because now it is their jurisdiction under the property and building code to try to enforce that code against the Church of God. That is a difficult issue for every city in the country, and so you have hit on a very difficult issue. There's no guarantee that they will maintain this building once they are the free and clear owners of it. During the mortgage, we have a little more recourse, but after they own it free and clear, you have to rely on your property and building codes as they are enforced by the city of Fulton.
They're not, they're not being enforced now, why? They're not gonna start ten years from now.
And let me say that we are going to, uh, maintain the upkeep and, uh, and we will never do anything that will bring disgrace or reproach on the Lord Jesus Christ. We will do the right thing.
I just, uh, you know, you bought that building there, I just don't understand how you can go in there and buy a building there and not have the building inspector and, uh, department there and go in there and say, well, it's God's, you're gonna go in and have the police report. And so I, I just can't see you walking through...
I, I think that, uh, I think that, uh, what you've said is a very good thing and I believe with all my heart, uh, that, um, after this meeting is over, we want to inquire faithfully as to the fire codes because our health, you know, our lives can, can be in jeopardy and we want to know what it's going to cost. And I believe I have been enlightened too tonight because if it's going to be a humongous, of a levitum proportion size of money, we can afford it. And, and, uh, we're gonna find out.
The fire department, you know, I mean, with, you know, with response to that building, probably within three to four minutes. Within three to four minutes, we're gonna have somebody...
Yeah, so we're gonna investigate into that.
The whole thing is, I still look at it, I, I still can't get it through my head, I just can't. A building that magnitude and the upkeep, the upkeep is gonna be tremendous for the next, uh, years. That building is going down, there's a lot of upkeep on it now to be done. And I, and twenty families, you're saying twenty families in that church, it's gonna afford the upkeep? I, I just can't, I can't even...
Sir, you know, sir, I think, sir, I, I think that we have, we have gone over this before and it is, and, uh, I feel, uh, the vibrations from you, you're against it anyway, so, but I think we've answered your questions already.
How many pastors is there, uh, yours type of church?
Okay, the Church of God, uh, has, uh, over three million members and the Church of God has, uh, uh, twenty-five thousand church buildings all over.
And...
And we are, we are affiliated with the Church of God.
And where, what is the closest church other than the city of Fulton?
What is?
Yeah, where, where is your closest, uh, pastor?
My closest pastor? Well, that would be Mexico, I think.
Mexico.
Mexico, the, our district, uh, that's where our district overseer is, Mexico.
Do you have one in Baltimore? Do you have one in Baltimore?
We don't have, uh, 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 there is a Church of God in Bolwensville, but the Church of God in Bolwensville is a separate local church. In other words, we are an individual local church, even though we are under the umbrella of the Church of God. You know, uh, you cannot put, uh, all of them in one sack and shake all of them together.
So the money that you'll be getting is from this big umbrella?
Hmm?
To restore the school?
Yeah, that's a good question. Uh, I wanna say too, uh, uh, we are able to also appeal to our general headquarters at, at Cleveland, Tennessee to help us should we need the help. I want you to know that. When we're talking about after two years paying the full amount of the money, uh, our main goal is to appeal to the general headquarters in Cleveland, Tennessee to provide that loan, to take the loan with, with them and give it, uh, to, to the school. And they've done that many of times.
What is the location of the, what is the name of the national headquarters that you have referred to? Is that...
Ch- Ch- Church of God International Headquarters.
Where is that?
It's in Cleveland, Tennessee, and we also have one in Long Island.
Cleveland, Tennessee?
Yes.
And the fellow that you had asked me to speak to...
Was from Long Island.
And where is that on Long Island?
That state office is in, uh, New York, Long, Long Island.
And is this information in the packet that I had asked you to provide to us with respect to your finances?
Yes, yes, it is.
So I'm going to receive that tonight?
Yes, yes. You're going to receive the Church of God incorporation, that says that our church is incorporated into the larger Church of God, uh, which has three million members and twenty-four thousand building churches.
All right, now, since it's that big...
I think I enjoy the camera.
No, it is, it is recognized with each individual chamber of congress, the churches are. Are they recognized within the chamber of congress? So if a person wants, person wants to do a, uh, investigation to see how well the church is organized and operations, they can go to the local chamber of congress of a city that your church is already...
As a matter of fact...
Find out how well...
Yeah, as a matter of fact, the Church of, the Church of God has been organized over a hundred years. So, uh, yeah, yeah, it's, it's pretty well registered everywhere, you know, legally.
For what they wanna open, is there any zoning that needs to be rezoned?
No, I, I don't think it's a zoning issue. I think there might be a serious, uh, building issue in a, in a four-story church. But that's something the Reverend should stop in and, uh, make an appointment to talk to my, myself and the, and the fire department just to make sure that before you go too far, you know exactly what you're getting into.
Steve, at the time your building was put up for sale, can you tell us what the condition of it was at that time?
I can't.
I've heard a lot of people say it was condemned, which I believe is not true.
I don't believe that's true, but I haven't been inside that building in years. I don't know if the fire department has or not.
Maybe, maybe Wayne will...
What, I can comment on that. When the building was put up for sale, okay, the prior school year, it was occupied by the city school district, the city of Fulton. We had a certificate of occupancy from the state of New York. We met all of the building codes, we met all of the inspections, which we must provide yearly by outsiders to make sure that the students are safe, so it wasn't, it met all codes. That, that's another issue of the neighborhood schools, the small neighborhood schools that we, we had a lot of in the city of Fulton. Our population was expanding, we didn't have enough space, the buildings were getting older and at that time, the Board of Education decided to build a new building and, and close and phase out the smaller schools and put the students in a facility that, the codes change. Codes definitely do change throughout the years and, and it was a, a new facility, the buildings were becoming older, much more difficult to maintain, and, and that was one of the, the reasons behind closing the smaller schools.
And that was, uh, the impression our congregation deduce or derive that the building was, you know, was okay, you know, that's what we thought, you know, uh...
Um, Reverend, one point I wanna make on that building is that I think the codes that it met were pre-existing codes. You could never, for example, build a four-story church today to that type of construction, that just wouldn't happen.
And that's what I was saying, would you, we're not going to use, um, all the floors and everything we were planning to use.
That could be one of the problems, you know, I don't know, 'cause I don't know all the details. The fire department doesn't know all the details, but you may very well be restricted to, uh, two, two floors, basically.
And that would be, and that would be just fine. I mean, you know, because, because like, like the concerned citizens, and I think they've been trying to help me too. They're saying, you know, it's a big building and you have to heat it and, and we weren't planning to use all the buildings anyway. And if we restrict it to two floors, that would suit us fine. But you have, you have really helped me because, uh, you know, you have helped me because if it's going to cost a lot of money, uh, you know, for the fire thing, I mean, we just can't afford that. You know, we're just, we're not, we're not gonna afford that.
Wouldn't the only just for fires, the, uh, materials inside, like the flames were wrapped with...
Uh, we've, we've checked that, we've checked that, the, the plumber's been working. These things are, are just minors, we can, we can, we can... We, we checked that too, and, and, and...
If you're gonna be only able to use two floors and then when it time was freezing and thawing, and freezing and thawing, the, uh, the building being broken down in car course, I'm not sure the building was heated all the time as it is and the school system pays for it in earnest. And when the heat shut off upstairs and the, uh, the floors buckling from the temperature changes, is this...
Yeah, we're working with the plumber on that and the plumber has really alleviated all our fears and, uh, it can be done. You know, we're working with the plumber, we can, you know, that can be done.
The wooden floors, uh, I know you have experience. The temperature changing will start buckling the floors.
I think that happened in the gym, i- i- it just did that. But, uh, we have gone over that with, with the plumber and, uh, and, you know, we're working on it. And, uh, that's not gonna be too expen- you know, expensive to maintain.
I think we should underscore that we're not going to enter into this note and mortgage unless the building is in the condition that it needs to be pursuant to your city code. That's the bottom line. If Reverend Bruno can't afford to bring it up to code, we will not enter, enter into a note and mortgage with him. No lender would and the school district is acting as a lender in this capacity. So I, I don't want there to be any mistake about that. Notwithstanding what Reverend Bruno says, we will not enter into this deal unless all of those i's are dotted and those t's are crossed with respect to your city code.
And then when you look toward a different avenue, if he, if his church can't meet the specifications to bring it to code, if they decide not to move into the building, the building is still left not up to code. In the future, are you gonna look to sell the building?
Sir, I am referring to the code, there is a code which applies to the uses to which he wants the building to be put. That is somewhat unspecific at this point. We will ensure that the code that he needs to follow for those activities, daycare, whatever, food pantry, whatever it is that he says he is going to do, that that building is in compliance with those codes. At this time, your fire department can better advise you whether that building is a danger to anyone. I do not understand that it is. If he cannot bring it up to code, there will not be a deal. And yes, the building will stand vacant until a more suitable purchaser comes along to take control of it.
Uh, let me also, uh, I clarify something. Um, I, I don't think that we should be held, uh, to bring it to code for daycare and everything that we are not going to do tomorrow or, you know...
Reverend Bruno, there's a law...
Or ten years from now.
There's an ordinance that applies, you need to comply with the ordinance, that's all. And the city is in the best position to advise you on that.
But I, I would like to comply with the codes for church as for now.
That is a legal issue for Mr. Luddington and for the mayor and they will advise you on that.
Okay.
Has asbestos been removed from the building?
Yes, we, um, the school district has to maintain a here documents in terms of asbestos and, and any other types of, um, substances which are deemed harmful. There, we have an O'Hara two form on file, there is no asbestos in any, there was no asbestos in any student occupied areas in the building. That's when we had the, the building and used it as an elementary school. So obviously, there are none in any occupied areas that any student or adult would go into. Now, to say there's absolutely no asbestos, that's not true. The floor tile, which in most houses is asbestos, is a small amount and there is some in the boiler room used to heat the boiler. Okay, I won't, you cannot say there's no asbestos. There is none in any student occupied areas, there is no friable asbestos in the building and we have documentation and it must be inspected yearly, which we have done and we maintain the documentation.
Can I ask you, uh, where the price of one hundred and eight thousand dollars came from?
Okay, the, the price of the building that the Board of Education agreed to when we set the fair market value, and that was the minimum bid, is, was one hundred thousand five hundred dollars. Anything else you read is, is just mistakes, that's all I can say, I can't account for that. All I can say is that there's a resolution passed by the Board of Education and that one hundred thousand five hundred dollar was the minimum bid on the property when we had an appraisal done for fair market value. In the best interest of the taxpayers, we want to receive fair market value for taxpayers' property.
Now, at this time, we have another appraisal and it turns out that it's not worth that much because of various code problems. We just don't ask the church for that amount?
No, th- th- this is a, there was a sealed bid for this amount and this is the amount that the tentative agreement is, is pending on and it will not change. It will not change.
What was the bid?
Pardon me? The bid... The bid, the bid was one hundred thousand five hundred dollars. That was, that was also the appraisal. That was the minimum bid the district would take. If someone, well, I'm sorry, one hundred thousand was the, uh, praise value. And the bid from the Church of God was one hundred thousand five hundred.
Reverend Brown?
I don't know very much about the Church of God. Can you tell us when your services are held and, and if anybody will be living in the building?
Uh, yes, um, our services, that's good. I'm on TV, I can... Our services are Wednesday nights, um, at, uh, seven PM to eight-thirty PM. Um, our Sunday morning services are ten AM, uh, throughout noon and, uh, sometimes if I'm preaching a storm, then twelve, to twelve-thirty. And, uh, you know, and nobody's going to live there. Ever, never, ever, never, ever, ever, never. Uh, somebody had asked me, you know, if I would have my, uh, the parsonage there as a pastor to live there, but I don't like to live, uh, above the, the church, so, you know, people knock on your doors when you're not ready in your pajamas, stuff like that, so...
Have you started remodeling the, inside of the school?
Uh, yeah, uh, this is something, you know, the rumor that we were having major renovation. Uh, what, what we did was that, um, we were hoping, um, to get, to, to be in there soon and we went, um, the first thing we did, we called, uh, Mr. Wembly, uh, the business administrator. We said, can we go in there and do some cleaning? Uh, we called our insurance company to cover it in case something happened. So they're covering it as of now. So we went there, there was mildew all over the, uh, the walls and we were playing, we were planning to have the teen center in the basement. So the first thing we did was clean the, the teen center and scrub the mildews off so that, so that we, we could clean. Uh, also, because we thought it wasn't going to be a major thing to do, uh, we were going to block, you know, we already blocked, um, one stairs going up because we don't want our kids to disappear on the second, third, fourth floor and fall off. So we were going, you know, we were, you know, putting a wall with a door for fire access. So that's what we've done so far. It costs three hundred dollars to do that, put a piece of sheetrock, you know, that's what we've done. And I'm even sorry for even doing that, uh, because, um, uh, what I had told Mr. Wembly is that I was going to just, just scrub the, uh, the, the walls and things like that, but, you know, we, we just did that, that's all.
And I, I would like to, um, comment on that further if I could. One, one of the stipulations that, um, Pastor Bruno asked if he could go in and clean and paint some of the building prior to a closing date. Obviously, I have to be concerned with the best interest of the school district and the taxpayers and because of that, the, the Reverend, we have ten thousand fifty-dollar deposit from the church in addition to an insurance certificate which was reviewed by our attorney for five hundred thousand for property coverage and three hundred thousand in general liability for the district, just for them to go in and clean and paint. I had to make sure that we were covered, and I say we, the city school district, in, in the event anything happened, if they went in there and cleaned and painted. So it was okay through the district, through the attorneys and, and the city school district is more than adequately covered to make sure if anything happened, our interests were taken care of.
Are we co-liable in the interim?
We currently insure the building.
We are co-insured on the new policy, if that answers your question. Yes, the school district is co-insured.
So it falls back on the school district if, uh, explain that to me?
If it exceeds five hundred thousand dollars in property damage or three hundred thousand dollars in a single occurrence, um, we would look to the Church of God if it exceeded those policy limits. If there was damage in excess of those policy limits, yes, we would look to the Church of God. We would not look to the school district.
And, and the, the property's only valued at one hundred thousand?
That's how we arrived at those amounts. We wanted them to be good and conservative.
So they couldn't come back on the school system or the board for any type of a lawsuit? If, is, is that a possibility?
Anyone can sue the district for any frivolous reason at any time. Would they prevail? The insurance is pretty conservative. The amounts of the insurance, we feel, are adequate for painting and cleaning. If the Reverend Bruno should exceed what we have given him permission of access to do, then he'll have to cease and desist. So that's just for painting and cleaning and trouble that he could possibly get into, painting and cleaning.
What, uh... Up to the time that the balloon payment's made at the end, is there any possibility of a lawsuit being thrown back on the school system?
The school system, yes. If the Reverend Bruno should act in some improper way and someone should be injured or whatever, certainly. The school district is the lender, but under the note and mortgage, we require insurance just like your lender may on your home and that insurance is yet to be neg... And that insurance is yet to be negotiated. We haven't even gotten to the stage where we've negotiated the note and mortgage yet. I drafted one, but as to what insurance we're going to require for them to carry during the twenty-four month period, it will be substantial. It's not yet negotiated. It will certainly be more than five hundred, three hundred. That's just for painting and cleaning and, and whatnot.
Are there any more questions?
I do have one regarding fire. If the second, third floors are to be shut off, uh, aren't there, uh, rules about the fireproofing? And I'm thinking of that terrible fire in Oswego at harvest time, at Bridge and First Street where they had shut off the town floors.
Let me answer that. We're not going to shut off all the stairs, you know, stairways. Uh, what we were doing, because, um, uh, we have a door, an entrance, uh, and a door on the first floor. Instead of those, we can just shut, uh, because the door's already there. We don't have to put a wall. The door is there. We're just gonna lock it. And, uh, there is another door from, from the basement that's already there. It's gonna be locked. We're gonna have the, the keys. We, we don't have to put any walls there, you know? And, and we're just thinking about putting up two walls. There are many stairs, more than just, you know, one or two stairs. We're just planning to put two walls with doors, with doors, access up and down, in and out. You know, we'll, you know, frame doors that you can go up, but not, not open, you know?
Are you going to use the fourth street entrance as the main entrance to church?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can you run through those six uses of the building again?
Sure.
And then let Reverend Bruno address them one by one. You kind of ran from kind of the way.
The, the first use is the affordable daycare center?
We're not going to do that.
You're not gonna do that at all?
Uh, it's, you know, it's gonna take years, uh, you know, to do that.
Okay. The, the second use was the youth center activities?
It's, it's dead.
Okay. Third was playground for children?
Outside, you know, I had driven outside. I saw those kids, you know, playing, play, playground and I think it's neat. And, you know, we're going to let them play, you know, playground.
The, the fourth use was the Christian school?
Yeah. Yeah, that's on hold, uh, be- because right now we don't have, you know, uh, the finances, you know, to do that now.
The fifth use was church services. And the sixth use was the food distribution pantry.
We would like to be able to distribute, you know, food, uh, to people who need it. We would...
Are you gonna have a food kitchen or what do you?
Uh, uh, package, uh, packaged food, uh, uh, because sometimes we do have people who have need. Uh, we were going to have a food pantry there and we're still planning to have it unless the fire code, unless we cannot, you know? But we, we're planning to have that unless we find out we can't, you know?
I'm just wondering, does traffic in the area, if that's what you do to the traffic in the area?
So, so, so...
I see Soviet Army when they get, or whoever, and you can't find a place to park them, can't you?
Yeah. So, so, so since you brought it up, since you've brought it up, then we have to drive it too. Then, then, then it's dead. You know, I'm saying, we, we don't want any conflicts. It's dead. You know, it's dead.
So why not, can you go one day and say, I got a problem, you're gonna...
No, I'm gonna take it to Burger King or somewhere. It's dead. No food distribution. Uh, that's, that's dead.
So Pastor, now you're down to three. Is that it?
Hmm? I don't, you see, you know, the reason, the reason I am here is not to have a wrestling match with the residents. And what I'm trying to do, what I'm trying to do is to say, I am here. I wanna work with you. Uh, I wanna be good, we wanna be good neighbors. And anything I can do to improve that, that's what I'm trying to do. Anything I can do to improve that, that's what I'm trying to do.
Uh, I don't think you should get rid of the, uh, food pantry you have here. As you might have noticed in the city of Fulton, over fifty percent to five percent of the citizens are, uh, public assistants or the people who are working, probably make ends meet at times and, uh, do need a place to turn. And sometimes, uh, like the Soviet Army, they, they don't have any, uh, anything left for certain citizens, uh, for food, food lines. Your, your thoughts, uh, having food pantry, I believe is a good thought and I don't think you should, uh, wish that just yet. That was my question. My question was, what would you do for the traffic in a residential neighborhood? The Soviet Army's in the first neighborhood, over there by Soviet School, the residential school. I was just wondering if there was provisions made for traffic, which there will be, sort of...
And Holy Family Church has a food pantry?
So, so part of the school?
Yeah. So, so, so you see, that's why I am here. I am here to be good neighbors, you know, to, to be good neighbors. And if anything, if anything creates conflicts and, uh, and will jeopardize, uh, our relationships, I am willing, I am willing to just let it, let it, let it go. Let it go.
So, we just refer to church?
You've dropped probably three or four items that we've had questions with then. Now, why would you, uh, common sense doesn't seem to stay?
But you've seen the conflict. You've, you've seen the, you've heard it yourself.
Well, would you give up on the church just as quick as you gave up?
I would hope, I would hope nobody would object to having a church there because Holy Family, you know, uh, I would hope not. Nobody would. Because obviously, it's been conspicuous. You've heard all the conflicts and...
What I'm concerned about is I know of a church in a, still own in a building that's possibly, what, maybe fifty by fifty or eighty by eighty, by the end of the year, they're asking for more money. And, and this is a one-story newly built building. Now, you're saying to me that you're gonna be converting a four-story building with a gym and there's twenty people. To common sense, don't make sense to me. If you want a church, why don't you just build something that's practical?
Well, you see, we believe, we do believe, you know, uh, one of these days, we don't know when it's going to be. But one of these days that we, we would like to use that, that building after we've discussed, with, with the fire codes, let me say this.
You're gonna have to start right from the fourth floor down to renovate that building?
It's an empty.
Well, we have, you know, we have looked into that. We've had, uh, men, you know, people's, uh, uh, who are, you know, experts on the roof, you know, you know, they looked at it and, and we have looked into that. And that building is not as bad of shape as, you know, people, people trying to say.
That's another thing I'm wondering about the school board. Do they have money to decommission a building if in case, uh, this building went two, three more years? Do you have money saved to tear this building down?
I, I will say to you that we do not, in the current budget, have money for demolition of that building. It, it, no, we do not.
You don't consider about decommissioning the building to the point where possibly you might have to tear this building down?
When we built the new building, there are several other smaller buildings we closed. We have already sold one. We are...
But not this big monster that we've got?
We're in the process of trying to sell that one right now.
And...
You know, let, let me say, because I am somewhat concerned because I'm getting the impression from, from you that this building is just a piece of nothing. You know, if that's the case, we're not gonna, you know, if that's the case, we don't wanna buy a piece of nothing. The impression, the impression that we got, you know, uh, in the several board meetings we have attended, they've been keeping the building, you know, uh, up, you know, to codes and...
Why hasn't anyone else been interested in this building? If it's such a good buy?
Well, I, I don't know, but, but all the, I'm saying, all the board meetings...
If somebody had said to me, this building's gonna be converted into a senior citizen complex with somebody with a lot of monies behind them, I'd say, okay, this makes sense to me. But to have somebody with just twenty members...
I didn't say twenty...
Twenty families?
Twenty members.
Are gonna take on, this common sense doesn't seem to be... I don't know. I don't think people are using this with, with this type of building. And in fact, I, I feel you're a very brave man to ever take, uh, tackle something of this magnitude, to tell you the truth.
Well, well, like, like I said, like I said, the Church of God is going, is going to own it. And the Church of God has three million members. And the Church of God would be more than happy to own a building like that and one day to have a Christian school in there. The Church of God is a, a billion-dollar couple... They are starting now. That's what we are trying to do.
Then this will be a Christian...
As a matter of fact, if the sale goes through at the dedication, we're going to, to, to have our first assistant, general overseer from Cleveland, Tennessee, is going to come and dedicate it. Uh, it's a building that's going to belong to the Church of God in general.
So then, after years, we can see this four-story building being used by two, three, four hundred people for, I, I don't know, what, what's a school that size house?
Uh, I, I don't know what the...
Where are you gonna get these people?
Well, you are one of them. I mean, you know, you can get saved, you know? I mean, you know, I, I, it is possible that you can become one of our great members there. I mean, uh, so, uh, you know...
This is my question. It's, and I, I don't know. It doesn't seem that...
Yeah. Like I said, like I said, uh, in all honesty, the, the Church of God, uh, owns at least twenty-four thousand church buildings already, has three million members. And a building of that magnitude, the Church of God, the Church of God is backing up. The whole Church of God is backing up. When we buy, when the local church buys anything, it doesn't belong to us. It belongs to the Church of God in general, to, to all the Church of God, you know, to the Church of God headquarters at Cleveland, Tennessee.
Down the road a bit, is this building will be a school and not a church?
A church, as church too. Why not, why not a church?
You combine the two?
Why not a church? We, we want it for a church, but I believe that, uh, as Christians, we have godly values. We want to encolcate in our children. And, uh, and, uh, one of strong purposes is a, is a Christian school because we would like to do that. A lot of families right now, in, in our Christian, uh, community, you know, they just homeschool because they, because they want to encolcate godly values in the children, which are not available at times outside. So we are considering that strongly.
I appreciate you for this, but I would think you'd want a bigger community than the city of Fulton for such a...
The city of Fulton has a future. It, it's called the city with a future and, and...
Signed off there for years.
I, I, I know. There is a future here. That's why we're here.
I'm sorry. When you said that you're in headquarters, you're in Tennessee, did you say Cleveland?
Cleveland.
Thank you.
Cleveland, Tennessee.
Mr. Blue? Is the playground part of the property in the purchase? The basketball court, the, the Fifth Street?
Yes, the entire lot, the entire lot surrounding the school in the school building are all part of the purchase.
Yeah. And, and you know, as it stands now, you have at least fifteen to twenty young people almost every day playing basketball there. Uh, then, they don't come from downtown Syracuse. They're there. And what we are going to do is bring them in and supervise them. They're there already. And I've made friends with them too. And we've become friends. I talk with them and, uh, you know, they, they, they know me and they drop by and say, when are you opening the teen center? That's nice. Uh, we want it. So they're already there. So we're not, you know, they're already there.
You intend to leave the playground available to the general public?
Uh, well, the, the, the thing is this, we, we are going to supervise it when we do so that people won't fall or sue us. We're going to have, uh, churchmen and church people supervise and monitor it.
Will it be secured in the hours that you enter?
Will it be? Well, we, we are going, you know, when we, when we have the playground, right now, we don't have it, uh, we, there are no swings outside, nothing. But when we have it, we're gonna make sure somebody is there to supervise it unless it's midnight. I don't know, but we'll go.
For them playing out there in basketball?
The basketball, I think that, uh, uh, what, what we're going to do is that we might not want them, if, if we buy it, we might not want them to play alone with nobody there.
After nine o'clock?
You know, uh, you see, when we were going to have the youths, the teen center, we were planning to have forty, at least forty teens, uh, two days a week, forty teens, and, and at least ten, ten to fifteen churchmen monitoring the whole situation. And every hour, we would have something special for them to do. It was going to be from two thirty to eight thirty PM. And, and, and at eight thirty PM, bus them to their home. And any rambunctious kid who doesn't compromise would be disqualified. You see, that was our plan, original plan.
So what happens with the other, you said two days a week?
Yes.
The other five days a week, who supervise? I mean, are you gonna say, okay, you can't command the property because we own this property now? It's now public, but we can't let it go?
We would probably ask them to come and play basketball inside now at the hours where the, when the youth center is open. That's what we'll probably have to do.
But when it's not open?
What, what?
When it's not open?
That's what I'm saying. We, we would ask them not to play outside, uh, till we don't tell, you know? We would probably take these things down, something, because we don't wanna be sued, uh, you know, people just falling off all over the place.
Any other questions? Chad, would you like to come up?
Uh, let, let me say something. Uh, we were planning, planning to have a Thursday night meeting. Uh, I don't know whether it's necessary or, uh...
Unless there's questions that haven't been answered, I would think, Reverend, that we've met our obligation, that the promise that I made to the people that came to the board meeting the other night was that I would get you to come to a meeting and, and you did rework your schedule to get here tonight and I appreciate that.
Well, originally, the Thursday night meeting was called by Reverend Bruno because he had a commitment for this evening. And this is why the Thursday night meeting was called.
Yeah.
And he has come this evening and answered our question. Unless someone else in the area would rather we have a meeting for what purpose, I don't know.
I don't, I don't see any, uh, really necessary...
Need for it.
Need for it, so...
And also, we were planning, you know, should, you know, should the sale go through and everything, we were planning to have an open house and where our all good neighbors could come and just, you know, we could show them around and fellowship with them and get acquainted with them. Thank you. Thank you.
I would like to thank everybody for coming. Um, thank you, Reverend, for coming tonight and rescheduling your, uh, out of town trip.
Yeah. I want, uh, to encourage everybody to go and vote. Uh, uh, some of my church members here, I want to encourage you, tomorrow is the election. You know it. So go and vote and, uh, that's it.
Thank you.